Welcome to the Southeast Connector Virtual Public Hearing. The Texas Department of Transportation, better known as TXDOT, is proposing to reconstruct and widen I-20, I-820, and US-287 through the cities of Arlington, Forest Hill, Fort Worth, and Kennedale in southeast Tarrant County, Texas. Thank you for joining us. My name is Ricardo Gonzalez, and I serve as the Director of Transportation Planning and Development for the Fort Worth District of TXDOT. Due to the COVID-19 outbreak, TXDOT is hosting this virtual public hearing in lieu of the traditional in-person public hearing. This prerecorded presentation will show the same information that would have been presented during the in-person hearing. We appreciate your interest in the Southeast Connector project and welcome each of you to provide comments, questions, and concerns about the project following this presentation. Before we start the hearing, I would like to take a minute to mention TXDOT's End the Streak campaign. November 7, 2000 was the last deathless day on the roadways in Texas. That means for nineteen years straight, at least one person has died every single day on Texas highways. That's a streak we wanted to break. Texans can play a major role in ending fatal crashes with a few simple driving habits, including wearing seatbelts, driving the speed limit, putting away the phone and other distractions, and never driving under the influence of alcohol and drugs. Let's end the streak together. This presentation will start by discussing how to make a comment on the proposed project, since this will be a little different than a typical in-person public hearing. We will then go into a detailed presentation concerning the location and design features for the proposed project. Next, we will discuss the anticipated environmental effects related to the project, followed by a discussion of right-of-way acquisition and the state's right-of-way acquisition and relocation assistance program as it relates to the project. If you have not had a chance yet, please review the project information, including the draft environmental assessment, environmental technical reports, public hearing presentation slides, and maps and drawings showing the proposed project design currently available on TXDOT's website, by searching the keywords "Southeast Connector." We will also like to thank all of the project staff and local and public officials that made this project and presentation possible. And thanks to all who are participating by viewing this presentation. Your participation and input are greatly appreciated. This hearing has been convened by the TXDOT Fort Worth District and is being held to receive comments from the public regarding the Southeast Connector project. All comments received as a result of this hearing will be considered during future project development. Many of you may have attended previous public hearings conducted by TXDOT. However, I would like to explain how we will conduct this virtual public hearing. Similar to an in-person public hearing, this public hearing has four central purposes: To inform the public of the status of planning on the project and present the recommendations based on studies performed to date; To describe the projects so that those participating can determine the project's potential to affect their lives and property; To give the public an opportunity to provide their comments and input on the project before location and design decisions are finalized. However, due to virtual format, the comment process may be a little different than what you're used to. We will give a detailed explanation of the ways to provide input on the project shortly; And finally, to develop a record of public views and participation to accompany recommendations for any decision. This public hearing is being held in compliance with both federal and state laws. For the official record, a transcript of this hearing will be made. TXDOT is committed to continuing its efforts to gain public feedback about this project. We understand this virtual public hearing format is a bit different, so let's take a few minutes and explain the comment process, which is the most important part of the presentation. The TXDOT Fort Worth District is asking the public to provide their comments in the following ways: One, to make verbal comment, call 817-887-6150 and leave a voice message when prompted. Please limit your voicemail to a maximum of three minutes. This option will be available starting on June 4, 2020, at 6:00 p.m. and will continue until June 22, 2020, at 5:00 p.m. Your verbal comments will be recorded and included in the public hearing documentation. Two, you may email your comments to southeastconnector@txdot.gov. Three, mail your comments to LOL, C.Busel, P.E., District Engineer, TXDOT Fort Worth District, 2501 Southwest Loop 820, Fort Worth, Texas, 76133. Four, additionally, you may submit your comments online. Visit www.txdot.gov. In the search "TXDOT" box in the upper right-hand corner of the webpage, enter the search term "Southeast Connector." Select the virtual public hearing webpage, then click on the "Submit Your Comment" button at the top right of the page or click on the email link at the bottom of the page. In the event that the texdot.gov website is unavailable, please use the link shown here as an alternative to the texdotproject website to access the project information and to submit your comments online. Comments must be received on or before June 22, 2020 to be included in the virtual public hearing summary report. You may also submit a combination of both verbal and written comments. As previously mentioned, project information, including the draft environmental assessment, environmental technical reports, public hearing presentation slides, and maps or drawings showing the proposed project design are currently available on texdot.gov. Following this hearing, the district will proceed with preparation of the final environmental documentation. Your statements and comments will be included in the virtual public hearing summary report. Each comment will be given full consideration in the preparation of the final environmental assessment and design recommendations for the Southeast Connector project. Before we start discussing the project details, the district would also like to acknowledge and thank our project partners that have or will participate in the development of this project, including Federal Highway Administration, also known as FHWA, North Central Texas Council of Governments, also known as NCTT-COG, City of Fort Worth, City of Forest Hill, City of Arlington, City of Kennedale, Tarrant County, Trinity Metro. I will now introduce Caitlin Kowalszak, the Consultant Public Involvement Specialist, who has been assisting TXDOT with developing this virtual public hearing.
Thank you, Ricardo. The TXDOT Fort Worth District proposes the reconstruction and widening of I-20, I-820, and US-287 corridors and interchanges within the cities of Arlington, Forest Hill, Fort Worth, and Kennedale in southeast Tarrant County. The limits of the proposed improvement include I-20 from Forest Hill Drive to Park Springs Boulevard, I-820 from I-20 to Brentwood Stair Road, and US-287 from Bishop Street to Sublet Road. The total project length is approximately sixteen miles. The proposed improvements would reconstruct and widen the main lanes along I-20, I-820, and US-287 within the project area. Additionally, frontage road systems would be constructed at various locations, and bike and pedestrian accommodations would be provided throughout. This project is needed because the capacity of I-20, I-820, and US-287 within the project limits is inadequate to meet the current and future traffic volumes, resulting in congestion, reduced mobility, and an unacceptable level of service within these project limits. The connectivity of I-20, I-820, and US-287 within the existing local transportation system is inefficient, resulting in reduced mobility. And there are currently no continuous pedestrian or bike facilities within or along the frontage roads, and no connection to municipal bike trails or facilities, resulting in a lack of connectivity. The purpose of the proposed project is to reduce traffic congestion and improve mobility on I-820, I-20, and the US-287 roadways within the project limits. Improve mobility and connectivity of I-20, I-820, and US-287 within the existing local transportation system and provide continuous bike and pedestrian facilities within or along the frontage roads and connection to the existing municipality bike trails and facilities. The next two slides discuss the existing roadway as well as the proposed project improvements, starting with I-20. The existing I-20 roadway from Forest Hill Drive to Park Springs Boulevard is composed of four to five twelve-foot-wide main travel lanes in each direction, separated by a concrete safety barrier or metal beam guard fence located along the I-20 center line, and a ten-foot inside and outside adjacent shoulders. At limited locations along I-20, a grass median is located on either side of the barrier, between the barrier and the shoulder. In addition, twelve-foot-wide auxiliary lanes exist between the entrance and exit ramps at various I-20 locations. An auxiliary lane is an extra lane construction between on- and off-ramps that allows drivers a safe way to merge into traffic while also preventing bottlenecks caused by drivers attempting to enter or exit the freeway. Two major interchanges exist within the roadway network: the I-20, I-820 interchange and the I-20, US-287 interchange. Along I-20, two-to-three-lane discontinuous frontage roads exist in each direction and are each composed of twelve-foot-wide lanes. Along I-20, from Forest Hill Drive eastward to the I-20, I-820 interchange, the existing I-20 main travel lanes will be reconstructed and widened to six twelve-foot-wide main travel lanes in each direction, with adjacent ten-foot-wide inside and twelve-foot-wide outside shoulders. Auxiliary lanes will be added between the entrance and exit ramps to allow for efficient vehicle weaving. The I-20 frontage roads would be reconstructed and widened from two lanes to four lanes in each direction. A new location frontage road would be constructed over the Union Pacific Railroad, and an eastbound frontage road would be constructed from Forest Hill Drive eastward to England Drive. The proposed design would provide continuous frontage roads from Forest Hill Drive eastward to the I-20, I-820 interchange. Along I-20, from I-820 eastward to US-287, the existing I-20 main travel lanes and the I-20, I-820, and I-20, US-287 interchanges will be reconstructed to provide five twelve-foot-wide I-20 main travel lanes in each direction with an adjacent four-lane collector-distributor road system installed in each direction. Collector-distributor lanes consist of parallel lanes running between the main travel lanes and the frontage roads that collect the traffic from closely spaced entrance ramps and then distribute it to a facility beyond the congested area. These collector-distributor lanes would provide separate vehicle movements and reduce main lane weaving between the vehicles traveling to and from US-287 with vehicles traveling along I-20. The existing I-20 frontage roads would be reconstructed and widened to two-to-four twelve-foot-wide continuous lanes in each direction. Along I-20, from the I-20, US-287 interchange to Park Springs Boulevard, the existing I-20 main travel lanes would be reconstructed and widened to five twelve-foot lanes in each direction with auxiliary lanes added between the entrance and exit ramps. The existing I-20 frontage roads would be reconstructed and widened to two-to-four twelve-foot-wide lanes in each direction. New location frontage roads would be reconstructed between Green Oaks Boulevard and Kelly Elliott Road. The existing I-820 roadway from I-20 northward to the I-820, US-287 interchange is a four-lane roadway in each direction, separated by a concrete safety barrier or metal beam guard fence located along the I-820 center line and composed of a twelve-foot-wide main travel lane and ten-foot-wide inside and outside shoulders. Two twelve-foot-wide continuous I-820 frontage road lanes exist in each direction from I-20 to the I-820, US-287 interchange. Two major interchanges exist within the I-820 roadway network: the I-20, I-820 interchange and the I-20, US-287 interchange. Direct connections within the interchange typically contain one fourteen-foot lane or two twelve-foot lanes, dependent on the location. Along I-820, from I-20 northward to US-287, the existing I-820 main travel lanes would be reconstructed to seven twelve-foot lanes in each direction. This reconstruction would allow the merging US-287 vehicles to enter and exit I-820 on the right-hand side of the corridor in both directions. This would help to eliminate the major lane weaving that currently exists between the vehicles traveling along I-820 and US-287 with the left-hand ramp access system. The existing frontage roads would be reconstructed and widened to two-to-four twelve-foot-wide continuous lanes in each direction. Generally, I-820 from the I-820, US-287 interchange northward to Craig Street is a two-lane roadway in each direction, composed of twelve-foot-wide main travel lanes, separated by a forty-to-forty-four-foot-wide grass median with a cable barrier system located adjacent to the southbound lanes. The I-820 shoulders within this corridor are composed of four-to-six-foot-wide inside shoulders and four-to-ten-foot-wide outside shoulders. I-820 from Craig Street northward to Brentwood Stair Road transitioned to a three-lane roadway in each direction, separated by a twenty-eight-foot concrete median with a concrete safety barrier or metal beam guard fence located along the I-820 center line. In addition, twelve-foot-wide auxiliary lanes exist at various I-820 locations between the entrance and exit ramps. The frontage roads between the I-820 and US-287 interchange northward to Brentwood Stair Road are discontinuous. Typically, these frontage road locations are curved and composed of two twelve-foot-wide lanes in each direction with two-foot-wide inside shoulders and six-foot-wide outside shoulders. Along I-820, from US-287 northward to Meadowbrook Drive, the existing I-820 main travel lanes would be reconstructed to four twelve-foot lanes in each direction with auxiliary lanes between the entrance and exit ramps. The frontage roads would be reconstructed and widened to two-to-three twelve-foot-wide continuous lanes in each direction. New frontage roads would be reconstructed from Rosedale Street northward to Craig Street and from Carey Street at US-287, and northward to Wilbarger Street at I-820 to provide for continuous frontage road system. Along I-820, north of Meadowbrook Drive, operational improvements consist of ramp modifications to and from Meadowbrook Drive and Brentwood Stair Road would improve the current weaving between closely spaced ramps. The existing US-287 roadway from Bishop Street southward to the I-820, US-287 interchange is a three-lane roadway in each direction, separated by a concrete safety barrier or metal beam guard fence and composed of twelve-foot-wide main travel lanes and ten-foot-wide inside and outside shoulders. The frontage roads are discontinuous at Miller Avenue-Wilbarger Street interchange and between Wilbarger Street and I-820 and at Carey Street at US-287. The frontage roads are curved and composed of two twelve-foot-wide lanes in each direction with two-foot-wide inside shoulders and six-foot-wide outside shoulders. The existing US-287 roadway from the I-20, US-287 interchange southward to Sublet Road is a two-lane roadway in each direction, composed of twelve-foot-wide main travel lanes with six-foot-wide inside shoulders and ten-foot-wide outside shoulders. The northbound and southbound main travel lanes are separated by an approximately sixty-foot-wide grass median, which contains a concrete safety barrier located adjacent to the southbound US-287 main travel lane shoulder. Two-lane US-287 frontage roads exist in each direction from I-20 southward to Sublet Road. The northbound US-287 frontage road is discontinuous at Little Road. The frontage roads are composed of twelve-foot-wide lanes with two-foot-wide inside shoulders and six-foot-wide outside shoulders. Along US-287 from Bishop Street to I-820, the project would reconstruct US-287 with three twelve-foot main travel lanes in each direction with twelve-foot-wide auxiliary lanes between the entrance and exit ramps. The existing frontage roads would be reconstructed to two-to-three twelve-foot lanes in each direction. Along US-287 from I-20 to Sublet Road, the project would widen the existing main lanes to three twelve-foot lanes in each direction with twelve-foot auxiliary lanes between the ramps and the I-20, US-287 interchange. The frontage roads would be reconstructed to two-to-three twelve-foot-wide lanes in each direction. Currently, limited sidewalks exist adjacent to the frontage roads along the project corridor and are primarily confined to only the major high-volume traffic frontage roads and cross-street intersections, as well as a pedestrian and bicycle bridge located over the I-20 main travel lanes north of Craig Street. Bike lanes also do not exist within the corridor. The proposed project would provide a ten-foot-wide shared-use pass for bicycles and pedestrians on one side of the project corridor and a six-foot-wide sidewalk for pedestrians on the other side of the corridor. These facilities would be located adjacent to the frontage road and would be Americans with Disabilities Act or ADA compliant. For non-vehicle users wanting to travel along the project corridor, pedestrians would be accommodated on both sides, while bicyclists would be accommodated on one side. ADA-compliant wheelchair-accessible ramps would be constructed throughout the project. The reconstructed cross-street interchanges would also include ADA-compliant sidewalks, wheelchair-accessible ramps, and marked crosswalks. The proposed project would comply with the TXDOT guidelines emphasizing bike and pedestrian accommodations and the March 11, 2009 US Department of Transportation Policy Statement on Bicycle and Pedestrian Accommodations Regulations and Recommendations. A bike and pedestrian bridge is currently located north of Craig Street and provides access across I-820 for users traveling from the area of West Handley Elementary School on the west side of I-820 to the area of Handley Park and Handley-Meadlebrook Community Center on the east side of I-820. Bridge users must walk across the existing frontage road on both sides of I-820. And even though the frontage roads carry low volumes of traffic traveling at relatively low speeds, there is no signal or protected pedestrian crossing at the frontage roads. TXDOT-conducted pedestrian bridge counts on the existing pedestrian bridge, the Craig Street Bridge, and the Meadowbrook Bridge. Counts were conducted on four days during peak travel times, both before and after Fort Worth ISDA resumed the school year. Based on the counts, Meadowbrook Drive Bridge was crossed by 373 users, the Craig Street Bridge was crossed by 65 users, and the existing pedestrian bridge was crossed by 27 users during the four-day period. TXDOT assumed these travel counts reflected the preference of bike and pedestrian users that currently cross at I-820. Based on the pedestrian and bike study, the existing pedestrian bridge will be removed as part of the project, and those bike and pedestrian users would be accommodated by using the proposed sidewalk or shared-use pass that would be installed on Craig Street and Meadowbrook Drive bridges across I-820. In addition to the removal of the pedestrian bridge at Craig Street, there are several other local access changes for motorists proposed as part of the project. The proposed access changes being considered are discussed in the draft environmental assessment and on the design schematics, both available on the project website for your review. The following slides summarize the proposed access changes. Several existing exit or entrance ramps will be reconfigured, including the removal of ramps in some areas to comply with current TXDOT design criteria. The reconfiguring of existing exit or entrance ramps would alter vehicle access for some adjacent businesses and residents along the frontage roads. The proposed project would change ramp locations along the corridor, resulting in several cross-streets losing direct access with the project main lanes. These cross-streets would have the direct entrance or exit ramp removed, requiring motorists to travel through additional intersections and traffic signals to get access to and from the project main lanes. This is anticipated to impact the direct main lane access for eight cross-streets. Ramped updates would also require denial of access from private properties to frontage roads and removal or relocation of driveways near locations where new ramps would connect with the frontage roads. Several ramps would be redesigned from a diamond configuration to an X pattern to improve access and mobility between the main lanes and the frontage roads and to increase the vehicle storage at traffic signals on the frontage roads. More vehicle storage would decrease the chance of vehicle queues into the exit ramps and main lanes, a safety and operational issue. This would reduce delays and improve emergency response times for community services. Cold acaks and street closings are needed at various locations because the existing streets would not match elevations of the proposed frontage roads or would conflict with the control of access requirements per TXDOT's Roadway Design Manual and Access Management Manual at ramp junction or intersections. These cold acaks would close access to one end of the street, requiring travelers to access frontage roads from adjacent driveways and streets in a more securitis manner. The design of the cold acaks would accommodate fire trucks and other emergency vehicles. Cold acaks and dead-end streets anticipated to be impacted are shown on this slide. These locations are also illustrated on the design schematics located on the project website. Several intersections at cross-streets would also be improved as part of the proposed project. This is anticipated to increase mobility across the project corridor. Craig Street is proposed to bridge over the I-820 frontage roads and main lanes to continue to provide local access across I-820. The construction of the jug handle connections are proposed to maintain access between Craig Street and the I-820 frontage roads. The jug handle configuration consists of providing at-grade two-way connections on each side of the I-820 frontage roads to intersect with the north side of Craig Street. The jug handles could slightly increase travel time and distance for some motorists. However, mobility is expected to improve through traffic on Craig Street as the current all-way stop-controlled intersections would change to only stop-controlled for the jug handles. Elevation changes at Craig Street would require a removal of direct access from Craig Street to Mel Street. However, this access would still be available from Peppman Street, a one-block detour. The elevation changes would also require removal of access from Rich Street with the southbound frontage road. England Drive, north of I-820, would be realigned and shifted approximately 300 feet to eliminate the existing segment of two-way frontage road and align England Drive with the existing bridge over I-20. The current two-way frontage road causes a potential safety concern since two-way frontage roads are uncommon for drivers in urban areas. Even though this realignment of England Drive results in several displacements, the accessibility and mobility in this area is anticipated to improve because of the realignment for motorists, bike, and pedestrian users along England Drive to travel across I-20. There is also currently no eastbound frontage road between Forest Hill Drive and England Drive. The proposed improvements would include the construction of the eastbound I-20 frontage road between these two intersections. A proposed eastbound I-20 frontage road would connect Forest Hill Drive to Hartman Road and Hartman Road to England Drive, where no frontage road exists today. The proposed project includes the construction of I-20 frontage roads over the Union Pacific Railroad. Currently, the Union Pacific Railroad acts as a barrier between communities on either side of the railroad. The construction of continuous frontage roads over the railroad would enhance local access, providing grade-separated crossings over the railroad where there are currently none. This would allow for new modes of transportation, including pedestrian and bicyclists, to safely cross the railroad, whereby increasing cohesion and access. New location frontage roads would be constructed along I-20 between Green Oaks Boulevard and Kelly Elliott Road. This would also benefit local traffic along with bike and pedestrian users crossing Key Branch. New frontage roads would be constructed along I-820 from Rosedale Street northward to Craig Street. These frontage roads would replace the existing collector-distributor system and provide better access to adjacent properties and minimize existing weaving conditions between ramps. New frontage roads would be provided between Carey Street at US-287 and Wilbarger Street at I-820. This would provide better circulation of travel between I-820 and US-287 frontage roads and possible access for adjacent properties. A 3D visualization model was also prepared to help the public understand the proposed project features. The visualization plan view of the project layout, exhibits of the proposed interchanges and neighborhoods, and fly-through animation are currently available on TXDOT's website by searching the keyword "Southeast Connector." The 3D video is also available on the virtual public hearing website shown here. A project aesthetics plan will be developed during the detailed construction design phase of the project. Development of the aesthetics plan will include coordinating with local cities for their input on the plan. Development of the aesthetics plan will include coordinating with local cities for their input on the plan. This slide illustrates examples of the aesthetic elements included in previous projects in the Fort Worth District that may be incorporated into the Southeast Connector project. During the project design and environmental review, several project alternatives were considered and eliminated from further consideration. Those alternatives include adding managed lands, adding express lands, or adding collector-distributor lands throughout the project corridor. TextDOT also considered adding general-purpose lands to provide needed additional capacity, just like the proposed project, except this alternative would not reconstruct the frontage roads or add bike and pedestrian facilities. Additional information about these alternatives can be found in the draft environmental assessment available on the project website for your review. The estimated total cost for the proposed project would be approximately $2 billion. It is anticipated that the project would be funded with federal and state funds. TextDOT plans to procure a design bill contractor to construct the corridors with construction expected to begin in 2021 and is anticipated to be completed in 2026. We will now discuss an overview of the environmental evaluation for the proposed Southeast Connector project. Prior to December 16, 2014, the Federal Highway Administration, or FHWA, reviewed and approved documents prepared under the National Environmental Policy Act, known as NEPA. However, on December 16, 2014, the Texas Department of Transportation assumed responsibility from FHWA to review and approve certain assigned NEPA environmental documents. The Memoranda of Understanding between TextDOT and FHWA was updated on December 9, 2019. Environmental technical reports have been performed for the Southeast Connector project to support the environmental assessment in accordance with NEPA. The environmental analyses are necessary to identify, avoid, and minimize effects to the human and natural environments. The draft environmental assessment was approved for further processing by TextDOT and has been coordinated with other public agencies. The environmental technical reports and draft environmental assessment are available at the TextDOT Fort Worth District Office and on the TextDOT website. If you need assistance accessing or receiving this information, please contact the TextDOT Project Manager Curtis Loftus, P.E., by calling 817-370-6807. The technical reports for this project address the potential environmental impacts identified in coordination with the engineering and design phase of the proposed project. These areas of evaluation include natural, social, and cultural resources. This slide shows a list of all of the resources that were evaluated during the environmental analysis. The following slides include a summary of the more notable findings. A traffic noise analysis was performed in accordance with TextDOT and FHWA-approved guidelines for analysis and abatement of roadway traffic noise and TextDOT's reasonable cost proposal for 2018 noise policy memo. The FHWA traffic noise modeling software was used to calculate existing and predicted-year 2045 traffic noise levels at 129 representative receivers. Representative receivers are locations where frequent human activity occurs throughout the project area. The model primarily considers the number, type, and speed of vehicles, highway alignment and grade, cuts, fills, and natural burns, sounding terrain features, and the locations of activity likely to be impacted by the associated traffic noise. Noise impacts were identified at 95 representative receivers and noise abatement measures were evaluated. These noise abatement measures consisted of traffic management, alteration of horizontal or vehicle alignment, acquisition of undeveloped property to act as a buffer zone, and the construction of noise barriers. Before any noise abatement measures can be proposed for incorporation into the project, it must be determined both feasible and reasonable. Based on the analysis, a total of 22 noise barriers are being proposed for incorporation into the project. The approximate locations of these noise barriers are shown on this slide and on the noise barrier exhibit available on the project website for your review. Final decision on noise barriers will be determined at noise workshops conducted with adjacent property owners during the detailed design phase of the project. Adjacent affected property owners will be given the opportunity to participate in these workshops and will be allowed to vote on whether they desire a wall adjacent to their property. Noise barriers will be included with the overall construction of the project. Final decision on the location and size of the proposed noise barriers will not be made until completion of the project design, utility evaluation, and polling of adjacent property owners. To avoid noise impacts that may result from future development of adjacent properties to the project, local officials responsible for land use controls must ensure, to the maximum extent possible, no new activities are planned or constructed along or within the predicted 2045 noise impact contours. More information about the traffic noise analysis, noise abatement measures, and noise impact contours can be found in the traffic noise technical report for the draft EA. In compliance with the FHWA Title V program and Executive Order 12898, federal actions to address environmental justice in minority populations and low-income populations. An assessment was performed to identify, minimize, and mitigate potential project impacts on minority and low-income communities. A large portion of the study area is comprised of these environmental justice communities with concentrations along I-820, US-287 north, and east of the I-820-US-287 interchange, as well as along I-820 west of the I-820-I-820 interchange. There are 42 potential displacements, 23 single-family residential, and 19 commercial properties associated with the proposed project. The displaced commercial properties services do not target or serve specific minority groups. The proposed project would not restrict access to any existing or public community service, business, commercial area, or employment centers. However, notable access changes at Anglin Drive and the frontage roads across the Union Pacific Road at I-20 and Craig Street would impact minority populations. Predominant minority populations in these impacted areas are Black or African-American and Hispanic or Latino. The proposed changes to Anglin Drive would provide direct access across I-20 north and south through the road realignment or through the removal of the existing offset roadway. This access change would cause displacements but substantially improve traffic flow through improved access. Adding jug-handle-style ramps at Craig Street and I-820 would provide direct access from the frontage roads to Craig Street due to the ramp reconfiguration in this area. This access would change would result in the displacement of one commercial and 10 single-family residential properties, but substantial improved traffic flow through improved access. Braided entrance and exit ramps that cross over each other vertically along I-820 would require Craig Street to be raised, making the frontage road connection without jug-handle ramps between Craig Street and the frontage road impossible without greater displacements or loss of connectivity between parcels and the frontage roads. The addition of shared-use paths for bicyclists and sidewalks for pedestrians would increase mobility for these modes of travel. The improved mobility for the proposed project would likely benefit Trinity Metro users and their trip times in the project area. This could benefit low-income users who may not be able to afford the cost of car ownership, in addition to other transit-dependent populations. The proposed roadway would ultimately provide all modes a more efficient route to access cross-streets and adjacent properties in the project area. The bike and pedestrian bridge located north of Craig Street provides access to Handley Park and other facilities, and its removal would disproportionately impact minority populations. However, the proposed enhancements to Meadowbrook Drive and the Craig Street Bridges, where there is more pedestrian traffic, would minimize the adverse impacts of the pedestrian and bike bridge removal. The project team performed site visits and multiple outreach and engagement events within these communities to understand the potential impacts and gather concerns from the community. Some of the public involvement activities include a town hall meeting with the citizens of Forest Hill and two town hall meetings with State House District 95, which includes the Handley neighborhood in the Craig Street area and a portion of the Forest Hill community. In these meetings, alternative design concepts were shown, and attendees were able to express concerns and have questions answered. Community cohesion, safety, and access would increase in areas where new modes would be provided, like bike and pedestrian facilities, to cross existing barriers such as roadways and rail lines. These benefits from the proposed project to local drivers, transit users, pedestrians, and cyclists would be equally distributed in the environmental justice areas, including the Anglin Drive and Union Pacific Railroad area and the Craig Street area, as well as non-environmental justice areas. Buying the application of minimization and mitigation measures and considering public input on the proposed project thus far, the proposed project is not expected to result in a disproportionately high and adverse impacts to environmental justice populations. Section 4F of the U.S. Department of Transportation Act, often referenced to as Section 4F, applies to publicly-owned significant inaccessible parks, recreational areas, and wildlife and waterfall refuge, as well as significant historic and archaeological sites, regardless of whether they are publicly or privately owned. The proposed project would not require the use of, nor sustainably impair the purpose of, any Section 4F protected properties. Impacts to cultural resources have been evaluated in accordance with TextDOT, FHWA, and the Texas Historical Commission standards and requirements. TextDOT archaeologists determined that an archaeological intensive survey is not warranted for the proposed project. Surveys for historic age resources were conducted in 2004 and 2020. There are two historic resources that have been previously determined eligible for the National Register of Historic Places listing, or NRHP, near the project, the Carver Heights Historic District and the Hawkins Cemetery. The project proposes no acquisition of right-of-way or easements from either resource or any other listed or previously determined eligible NRHP property. It is anticipated that the proposed construction would have no adverse effects to historic resources. The proposed project crosses 19 water bodies and two wetlands within the project limits. Construction within the jurisdictional limits of the water bodies would be authorized by the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers under a Section 404 of the Clean Water Act, Nationwide Permit 14, for linear transportation projects. A pre-construction notification would not be required because the impacts would be less than a tenth of an acre at each crossing, and the wetlands have been avoided during the design process and would not be impacted. The proposed project crosses the 100-year floodplain associated with Village Creek and its tributary, Key Branch, and five of its tributaries, and six tributaries to Lake Arlington. The hydraulic design for this project would be in accordance with the current FHWA and TextDOT design policies, laws, regulations, and standards. The proposed project would not increase the base flood elevation to a level that would violate applicable floodplain regulations and ordinances. This project is located within an area that has been designated by the Environmental Protection Agency, or EPA, as a serious and marginal non-attainment area for the 2008 and 2015 ozone national ambient air quality standards, or NACS. Therefore, transportation conformity rules apply. To comply with conformity, the Transportation Improvement Program is being updated. Construction of the proposed project would include drilling of bridge piers, excavation, and other earth-moving activities. Such activities have the potential to encounter hazardous materials and substances associated with past human activity. A hazardous material site assessment, or ISA, was completed for the proposed project. Seven sites were determined to be either high or moderate environmental risk to the proposed project. As the project advances and detailed design is developed, further hazardous material impact evaluations will be performed to determine the need for additional investigations. The proposed project would impact different vegetation habitat types, including cross-timbers woodland and forests, disturbed prairie, riparian, urban, and open water. Impacts to vegetation would be avoided or minimized by limiting disturbance to only that which is necessary to construct the proposed project. The removal native vegetation would be avoided to the greatest extent possible, and a native and locally-adapted seed mix would be used in the revegetation of all disturbed areas. In conclusion, the studies, analysis, and evaluations performed thus far indicate the proposed project would not cause significant environmental impacts. This slide identifies completed and ongoing agency coordination conducted for the proposed project so far. Agency coordination would continue through project construction. Throughout the duration of the project, TextDOT has conducted multiple events for local officials and the general public to disseminate information about the project and receive input and comments on the proposed improvements. This slide provides a list of the events that have taken place since the initiation of the Southeast Connector project. Next, let's discuss the right-of-way acquisition process. Right-of-way acquisition and the denial of access would be required to accommodate the proposed facility. A total of 22.6 acres of new right-of-way and 3.3 acres of permanent easements would be required to accommodate the proposed improvements, ramps, and bridge structures. There would be 22 residential displacements and 19 commercial displacements due to the project. Property rights needed for the expansion of the Texas Highway System are acquired under the guidelines of the Uniform Relocation Assistance and Real Property Acquisition Act of 1970 and the various addendum. Further, it's the policy of TextDOT that individuals impacted by the transportation system expansion shall not be denied benefits, excluded from participation, or otherwise be subject to discrimination based on the grounds of race, color, sex, age, handicap, or national origin. The state's authority to acquire property for a transportation system is founded in the Fifth Amendment to the Constitution of the United States. This authority can be used only when there is a demonstrated public need for the property and property owners are compensated with just compensation. Just compensation is defined as the fair market value of the property needed plus an amount for damages that might occur to the remaining property as a result of separating the required right-of-way from the whole property. As previously stated, each impacted property owner is offered just compensation for the property needed for the project. To arrive at this value, independent appraisers are hired to prepare detailed appraisals and establish value. A written offer to the property owner is made based on the value determined in the appraisals. The owners are given a minimum of 30 days to consider the offer. Advanced acquisition is TextDOT's ability to legally purchase right-of-way prior to the environmental clearance or before a determination is made that the property is needed for the project. TextDOT has reformed advanced acquisition of right-of-way for this project. The advanced acquisition process followed the same legal requirements mentioned previously, including the Uniform Relocation Assistance and Real Property Acquisition Act of 1970 and just compensation. Brochures explaining the program in more detail can be found on the TextDOT website under Forms and Publications or by contacting the TextDOT office. If you have any additional questions concerning the acquisition of property, denial of access, or driveway changes, please contact the TextDOT Fort Worth District Right-of-Way Office. I will now turn the program back to Mr. Ricardo Gonzalez, who explained the process for public inquiries.
Thank you, Caitlin. As previously stated, one of the goals of the public hearing is to receive your thoughts, questions, and concerns about the proposed project. We will now review the public comment process. Comments may be submitted through email at southeastconnector@txdot.gov, by mail to lolcbussel@the-textdot-fort-worth-district-office, online at txdot.gov, or by calling 817-887-6150 and leaving a voice message. Please limit your voicemail to a maximum of three minutes. You may also submit a combination of verbal and written comments. Your verbal, email, and written statements will be equally accepted following this hearing and must be received on or before June 22, 2020. Following this hearing, documentation of this public hearing will be prepared and will be reviewed by TextDOT Fort Worth. and will be reviewed by TechDOT for a final environmental finding and design approval. Each voicemail, email, and written statement received on or before June twenty-second, two thousand and twenty will be carefully analyzed. Following the comment period, TechDOT will prepare a public hearing summary report that will include responses for all comments received on or before June twenty-second, two thousand and twenty. Where appropriate, changes will be incorporated into the project design and revisions made to the environmental documentation. In addition, property owners near an area where the proposed project may be altered would be contacted and coordinated with concerning any proposed changes. After the public hearing summary report has been approved and all concerns are addressed, TechDOT is anticipated to issue an environmental finding for this project in the summer of two thousand and twenty. After the finding is received, right-of-way acquisition would continue and utilities would be relocated with construction anticipated to begin in the winter of two thousand and twenty-one. Construction is expected to be completed with the roadways open to the public in winter of two thousand and twenty-six. Please note that the public may call project staff during regular office hours or email project staff to ask questions about the project at any time in the project development process. You can contact the TechDOT Project Manager Curtis Loftus P. by calling 817-370-6807 or by email at southeastconnector@txdot.gov. Thank you for watching this virtual public hearing and interest concerning the proposed design of the Southeast Connector project. This concludes this presentation, and this hearing is now adjourned.